Crystal City Council, March 10th, 2020. Do you want to do roll call, please?
Sure. Councilmember Kaiser?
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Here.
Councilmember Parsons?
Here.
Mayor Adams? Councilmember Banks?
Here.
Councilmember Budiszewski?
Here.
Councilmember Deschler?
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first order of business is we're going to approve the agenda for tonight.
Go move.
John, okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Nancy, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Not opposed, so motion carries. And we have some appearances this evening. The chief revering is going to present some awards, so if you'd like to get started.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Deschler and city council members. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. As you know, Crystal Police Officers do outstanding work every day to serve, protect, and assist those in the community who live, work, and worship here. Most of their work goes largely unrecognized, and we all understand that is part of our job. However, there are many times when the actions of officers far surpass our normal motto of service with compassion, integrity, and professionalism. As part of the Police Department's recognition program, we feel there are times that accomplishments should be recognized in front of the city council and community, which is why we're here today. I'm honored to recognize the next two officers that I'm going to call up here tonight for their work. If Sergeant John Kurtz and Officer Jordan Myrie could step forward. On November 12th, 2019, officers were dispatched to a possible drug overdose in the 7700 block of 36th Avenue. Sergeant Kurtz and Officer Myrie arrived on scene and located a 23-year-old male unconscious, barely breathing, and with blue skin color. Officers were told that the male had unintentionally overdosed on a combination of heroin and methamphetamine. Officers administered the drug Narcan and provided rescue breathing to the victim. After a few minutes of their care, the male began breathing on his own and regained consciousness. He was talking with the officers while he was being brought out to the ambulance for transport to the hospital. The Crystal Police Department Life Saving Award is presented to department personnel who save a human life in imminent danger of death through the application of medical efforts. We are pleased to award tonight Sergeant Kurtz and Officer Myrie with the Life Saving Award. I have to say, we have some family members tonight, as you can see by Sergeant Kurtz's family is here. You see that brand-new little baby?
I know.
And then his other daughter is here as well, and wife and uncle.
Dad.
Dad, sorry. Well, now I'm going to tell you why I called him uncle. So John actually has an uncle who is a police chief in Medina?
He used to be in Mound.
Mound, right. And they look exactly alike. I'm not kidding, they do. You do? Okay. I'll be done with that now. Thank you very much. Okay. The next two awards, and I'm going to talk about, the officers aren't here tonight, so I'll briefly tell you about the award that we're going to be giving Sergeant Gabe Storrs, the Stork Award, which you probably heard of on our social media page. And I just want to preface why you're hearing about this so late. As you know, we revamped our awards program. Normally, you're going to hear about these items a little sooner than you've been hearing about them over the next year, but this one happened in September of 19. And officers were dispatched with paramedics to the 5100 block of Angeline for the imminent birth of a baby. Sergeant Storrs was the first responder on scene and was met in the front yard by the frantic grandma-to-be. Sergeant Storrs was directed into the lower level of the residence and found the mother laying on the floor in active labor. As Sergeant Storrs got onto the floor near the mother, he got down there just in time to receive the healthy baby boy into the world. Sergeant Storrs made sure the baby was breathing and crying properly, wrapped him up, and made sure mom was doing okay, which she was, until the paramedics arrived. The Crystal Police Department Law Enforcement Stork Award is presented to department personnel who have assisted with the delivery of a newborn human life while in the line of duty. We're excited to award Sergeant Storrs, or as he was called in the days after this event, Sergeant Stork. So you probably, as I said, you probably saw his bright and smiley face on our social media page after that was, after he delivered that baby. It was quite a sight. I think he was smiling for probably the next week or so. And officers Jessica Donahue and Lieutenant Pete Underthon, who aren't here tonight either. On December 20th, 2019, officers were dispatched to the 4100 block of Adair Avenue for a possible overdose. Officer Donahue and Lieutenant Underthon arrived and located 32-year-old female unconscious and not breathing. Officers were told the female had unintentionally overdosed on heroin. Officers administered the drug Narcan and provided rescue breathing to the victim until paramedics arrived. Paramedics administered additional Narcan, and the female eventually began breathing on her own. The Crystal Police Department Life Saving Award is presented to department personnel who save a human life in imminent danger of death through the application of medical efforts, and we're proud and pleased to present it to Officer Jessica Donahue and Lieutenant Pete Underthon. So as you know, we will also be presenting all of these awards in May to our officers at our May department meeting. So thank you again for allowing me to be here tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Can I just ask a quick question because on that Narcan? You know, when I first started my council career, we weren't carrying, the officers were not carrying Narcan, and I didn't think that they were going to because we weren't medically trained. When did we switch and go to Narcan? I know everybody has it now, it sounds like, so.
Yep, so you're testing my memory, so I'm going to say that we switched.
Well, ballpark, three years ago, five years ago?
Yeah, a year or two ago. Brian, was it before you got here? Yeah, so I'm going to say it was between two and three years ago.
So is it a needle shot?
Yeah, yep, it was a previous sheriff, so it was under Sheriff Stanek.
Okay.
Nope, so it's a nasal spray that goes up the nose.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, if they're unconscious, how could they? How does it work, I guess?
I get trade, I should know this. I'm sorry, yes.
Because if they're breathing lightly enough, it'll get up their nose, that it'll... That's amazing.
It works.
It's sad that we need it, but it's a blessing we have it.
It is.
That was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is our consent agenda. These are items that we are just going to pass routinely, generally speaking. 99.9% they're non-controversial, so I'll read them into the record. Approval of our minutes from the following previous meetings: City Council Work Session on February 13th, 2020; City Council Meeting on February 18th, 2020; City Council Work Session on February 18th, 2020; Approval of List of License Applications Submitted by the City Clerk to the City Council. A list of that is on file always at the office of the City Clerk. We are approving of a resolution accepting the following donations: $500 from Lang Nelson Associates on behalf of Caliber Chase Apartments for Becker Park Improvements, Playground Improvements; again, $500 from Lang Nelson Associates on behalf of Cedarwood Apartments for the Becker Park Playground Equipment Improvements; $500 from Pizza Ranch for Becker Park; and $10,000 from the Crystal VFW Post 494 for Becker Park Playground Equipment; Approval of our Resolution Releasing a 1960 Sanitary Sewer Agreement on the Site of Proposed Assisted Living and Memory Care Facility at 3501 Douglas Drive North; Approval of a Resolution Authorizing the Eastman Agreement with Hennepin County for Storm Sewer Access. Do you have a motion or any discussion?
I didn't make a motion, but I do have a question.
Sure.
So where does that kind of put us with some of that fundraising? As far as, I know, this is additional to, right?
Correct. This is additional to what you've seen, correct. Correct.
Good numbers, I hope.
Yes.
Nice to see the community coming to support.
Well, I think we had a large donation that tanked. It kind of went south.
Agreed.
And so there was another resurgence of fundraising efforts to kind of make up for that initial loss, so.
Got it. But I would like to make a motion.
And that was also a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Okay, John?
I second that motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Next is an open forum time. That's a time where residents could come and chat with us about items that they have concerns or questions about. Nobody can talk much longer than three minutes tonight. We generally don't talk about the topic after they discuss it, but we will put it on, possibly put it on an agenda for a future meeting. So tonight, we have Jesse McCaffrey. Did I pronounce that correctly? All right, if you would just speak into the microphone and state your address.
Sure. So my name is Jesse McCaffrey, and I live at 4633 Louisiana Avenue North. So my question kind of relates to citizen involvement, and so this is something that I've been thinking about in the last couple of months, about seeing more active participation from citizens when it comes to like meetings and events. And I know that the city has enacted certain actions to try to improve that, so some of the things that I can think of would be making meeting minutes and recordings easily available, opening certain meetings to the public, like the work sessions, and also producing promotional audio and video. And so I was just curious about if there has been any studies or thoughts about which of these actions has been most productive in terms of improving citizen involvement, or if there's anything that's, you know, in the works for the future that people are particularly excited about, so.
It's an election year, that always helps.
Well, you know, we have the open forum. All work sessions are always open to the public unless it's to discuss, say, a personnel matter, or maybe if we're going to buy a piece of property and we're negotiating a dollar amount. Otherwise, they're always open, they're always recorded, and they are, if, you know, you go to the city website, you could read the minutes, you can see an upcoming packet, you can watch videos of the actual council meetings, and you could also listen to the auto recordings of any of our work sessions. You know, I think we've mentioned that almost every city council meeting, and we have that, you know, sometimes we address it in our quarterly newsletter. You know, we try to get word out about the website. I don't know, if you have some magic pill that you can tell us how that we can get people engaged, I'd love to hear it, and so would our communication director, because I think we spend a fair amount of time trying to engage everybody.
Definitely.
And it's, I know when I run for office, it's just almost heartbreaking because, you know, you get 5% of the people that answer the door and seem to want to be engaged, and 95% of them, in my opinion, are just apathetic, like, thanks for the literature, and they slam the door. So I don't know how to create excitement and get more people involved. It's not for lack of trying, okay?
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, that was, that was my statement, but.
I think, I think social media has been effective. I don't think we've had any official, like, studies done to cumulatively show with a bar graph, which I, has, I think Mike has presented, our communication director just recently did a presentation of all his work efforts over the last year, and did he have any statistics for us about what gets the most engagement and the most response from people?
No. He had some, whoops, sorry, I'm so loud. He had analytics from our website, but not from all social media.
I think my hunch would be that social media gets people more engaged, but I don't know, right, we should probably take a look at, and then focus our efforts there, maybe.
John?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't, were you?
You can go ahead.
Okay. When we do look at the website, we look at, like, you know, how long people spend on pages or how many pages they go to. Generally, they find their answer right away. We found that the biggest spike in terms of the amount of volume that actually goes to the website is on election days, so people have interest about the candidates or where to vote or something like that, they'll use our website to be able to direct themselves to that type of information. But generally, for the most part, I don't think that, it seems to be pretty constant low buzz. We seem to find the same people on the commissions, same people, you know, it's, you know, pretty much the same people who are involved across the board, so.
I would, I would say, I don't know what changed, right? This is my second year on the city council, I don't necessarily know what changed. One thing I do think is commendable was when we did the last round of interviews for commissions, there was a lot of younger people, meaning, I would say, that would be under 40, I think everybody, almost except for one, and they were relatively also new to the community, meaning they moved here within the last, you know, couple of years. And so that was very exciting, seeing that people were moving here, wanting to get involved, but again, I don't think we have a necessary metric. It's still kind of, I would say, stale, but if you have any suggestions or anything to help offer, bring that.
Oh, I mean, I was looking for the suggestions, but, yeah.
I mean, I think we're on Twitter, right?
Facebook.
We're on Nextdoor.
Nextdoor, Facebook.
We've got FaceBack, yeah, FaceBack. Sorry, I have a plug here, so it's hard for me to, ah. I mean, I just can't fathom anything more, short of going door-to-door and, you know, leaving flyers at people's door and telling them.
Yeah, I think that, along with our city events, such as Crystal Frolics, Night to Unite, those are probably.
Airport Open House.
Airport Open, thank you. Bowling for Leo this Sunday.
Yeah.
But there, we do a lot of activities. I think we've really increased our amount of activities, and especially through Crystal Rec, which Jesse, you're on the commission, and thank you for that. And I know you're actively working on getting community involvement increased through that organization as well. But I'm just thrilled to see, to Brendan's point too, meeting all these people, especially youngers, who are in their late twenties or so, coming in, just moving in and wanting to get involved and get plugged in. That's very encouraging. So we're going to keep working on it, but we welcome any suggestions. The other thing I wanted to mention too about involvement, you're here tonight to speak to us, which is great, we always encourage. We also have the Citizen Input Time once a month, where you can sit down with the mayor and council, who's available once a month, in the conference room, off mic and off camera, so you can have real good candid discussions that way about any concerns or suggestions that way, too. But thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. And again, our communication director is Mike Peterson, so if you have, you know, a couple of ideas, you could certainly reach out to him or reach out to us and let us know, and we'll share it with them, because any ideas we get are just great. Thank you for bringing that up. All right, now on to our regular agenda. This is where we list every council meeting, our expenses that are over $25,000. So League of Minnesota Trust Insurance Company, first quarter 2020 Workman's Compensation Insurance, $99,407. Metropolitan Council Environmental Services, wastewater for services in March, $137,128.9. Logis, which is our computer monthly application support and server hosting, $38,239.05. MTI Distributing, replacement mower number 123, it's a Toro Grunemaster, it's a net of trade in, $53,954.77. West Metro Fire District, February contributions to our fire services every month, $106,380. Golden Valley Joint Water Commission, it's January water cost plus the 2020 capital improvement funding, $481,929.88. Minnesota Para, Public Employer Retirement Association, employee and city required contributions for February 21st, 20 payday, $63,213.34. And Health Partners Incorporated, March health insurance previos, $119,145.05. Total disbursements, $1,099,266.63. Is there any questions on any of those? Do I have a motion to approve? John?
So move.
I'll second.
Nancy, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item two on our agenda, the council is considering a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the 2020 Utility Reconstruction Project, and a resolution approving ordering the advertisement for bids for the 2020 Utility Reconstruction Project. Mark Ray, our Public Works Director here, is here to give us a little brief overview of this project.
Good evening. As we discussed earlier in the work session, the schedule for the 2020 Utility Reconstruction Project, we've had two open houses, to the conversation earlier. We tend to see, where we've notified everybody on the block, maybe a 20% turnout, to provide some perspective on that. We did another open house in February. Tonight, the item before you is approving plans and specifications and authorized bidding. You'll be considering the contract on April 21st, and then project is scheduled to be completed in late fall. As far as communication go, we have done a number of direct mailings to all the properties, obviously the open houses, and then additional mailings will occur once the contract is approved and the timeline is known. Cost estimate for this project is $2.1 million. The construction side of that is $1.8 million, and professional services about $300,000. The funding allocated is $2.15 million from a variety of sources, and just again, there will be no assessments as part of this project. CenterPoint Energy will be replacing some of their gas mains, service laterals, and then moving gas meters outside of homes where they're currently inside of homes. CenterPoint will be directly communicating with properties as it relates to that work. Tonight, the council is being asked to motion to approve the resolution approving the plans and specifications for the reconstruction project, and then a motion to approve the resolution ordering the advertising for bids for the 2020 Utility Reconstruction Project. With that, are there any questions?
I have a question. Mark, with the open houses, unfortunately, the turnout was low, but maybe that's because people are excited and happy that this is going on, or?
The turnout's actually consistent as a percentage. So when we look, we look back at Phase 16, there was about 500 properties, and we had around 80 homes. So from a percentage standpoint, that seems to be pretty consistent.
And at the open houses, was there any consistent theme or concern from the residents?
It's generally just some specific information, or the most common thing we'll hear is like a backyard drainage concern, and making us aware of that. We had a few questions on tree removals, and then some driveway stuff and access during the project.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any further questions from the council?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
Let's say I'll make a motion approving plans and specifications for the 2020 Utility Reconstruction Project.
Second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. You want to continue on, Nancy, with?
Sure. Absolutely, and I'll make a motion to approve the Resolution 2020, ordering advertisement for bids for the 2020 Utility Reconstruction Project.
Brendan, okay?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Motion carries. You know, sometimes people will ask me, you know, when you come to the council meetings and you just make a decision so quick on some of these projects, but you don't ever see me discuss it. It isn't that we haven't discussed it, we've generally discussed it at length at these work session meetings, and so if people want to hear the background of some of these conversations, that's the time to click on and listen to the work sessions.
Or attend them.
Or attend them, yes, because it's not like we just come up here and willy-nilly spend $2 million without discussing it at length ahead of time.
To be fair, you have not authorized the payment of anything tonight, just for bids. You'll be awarding the contract at the 21st.
Yeah, it's a pretty much done deal.
I appreciate your confidence, and hopefully the bids come in where we want them.
All right. Next item, the council will consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of a water main gate valves and hydrants. Again, our Public Works Director, Mark Ray, is here to address us.
So as noted before, we have a number of projects this year in the city that involve water main work, and to try to get better pricing on this, we're going to be providing the gate valves and hydrants to a variety of projects, so we're going to be placing one bulk order for the hydrants needed for these projects. We solicited three quotes. Boyd's Water Product did have the lowest one at just a little bit over $37,000. The funding source from these comes from a variety of capital budgets, some operating budgets, and then some of the developments going in.
All right.
Yeah, sorry.
I have a question. Can you go back to that slide? This is, just as me being curious, I was looking at the graphic. Could you explain what a certified holiday-free interior coating is?
No, I can't, actually. Other than to say that our water system's reliable 365 days a year, it doesn't take holidays, and we're committed to providing quality water service to all of our properties.
I like that answer, thank you.
All right, do we have any other questions? Anybody want to put a motion on table for this?
I will.
All right, John?
I authorize the contract for the replacement of the high-service pumps. Wait, am I one too many? I approve the purchase of water main gates, valves, and hydrants.
All right, do I have a second? Nancy?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any disagree? Nope, okay, motion carries. All right, next, we're going to consider a resolution authorizing the contract for the replacement of the high-service pump at the reservoir. Again, our esteemed Public Works Director, Mark Ray, is going to share information about this.
So this one, we're actually acting on behalf of the Joint Water Commission, so this pump is up at the reservoir. It's, we're replacing one of the four pumps that are there. It's actually never been replaced, it's only been maintained and rebuilt throughout its life so far. Two quotes were received for this work. The loan was the Keys Well Drilling at $218,000. Joint Water Commission has already approved this project, and so we are just administering the project. They'll be paying the bills and kind of handling the financial side. So with that, before you look in for a motion to authorize a contract for the replacement of the high-service pump.
Okay. Now, is that $215,000 per unit?
We're only doing, we're only doing one pump.
Oh. So we're going to split it three ways, essentially? Kind of, indirectly?
Yes, correct.
It comes out of the Joint Water Commission?
Correct, yep.
All right, any further questions on that from the council? Anybody would like to make a resolution?
I can do that, would you?
And you want a second?
I would second that.
I make a, oh geez, where'd I go? All right. Make a motion authorizing a contract for the replacement of the high-service pump.
I second that one, yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, and our last item is the council will be considering approval of a contract with our city manager. Who would like to discuss that? Is that you, Kim?
Oh, I can.
Okay. Since it is your contract, okay.
If the council remembers, we did, or you did my annual performance evaluation at the February 13th work session, we brought in Karen DeYoung, as we have the last couple of years, to help facilitate the conversation and have the evaluation instrument. And so you have a contract in front of you for 2020 with the wage adjustment consistent with all the other employee groups for 2020, the 3% adjustment, and that's the only change in there.
Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, I was going to make a motion to approve.
Okay. Olga has put a motion to approve.
I will second.
Okay, Tree's second. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, welcome to another year, Ann.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your service. That concludes our meeting this evening, except we do have some announcements. I'll quickly read them off, and then if anybody else has any other announcements. The city council will hold a work session on Thursday, March 12th, at 6:30 in Conference Room A, that's the first conference room, right when you walk into the city hall. We're going to be talking about panhandlers, so if you don't like panhandlers, this is the time to comment. Pipe in. We're going to have a bowling event this Sunday at about 10:30, quarter to 11:00. We're going to start out at New Hope Bowl, bowl two games, and then we're going to navigate over to the Crystal VFW, where we're going to have lunch, and we've got some great raffle prizes, one of which is a ride along with the police department, and also lunch with the police chief, too. We've got other prizes, too, but. The Crystal Business Association meets Wednesday, March 18th, in the community room downstairs. Mayor Adams will be there to present the state of the city. Second Annual Cheers to Crystal fundraiser is Friday, March 20th, 6 to 9, at the community center. Remember last year to allow parking overnight in case people have too many cheers, okay? Got that? Okay, because I remember last year, somebody got a ticket or something. Coffee with a Cop will be held on Saturday, March 21st, from noon to 2:00 at Egg House Cafe. The next Crystal City Council meeting is Tuesday, March 24th, at 7:00 in the council Crystal City Council meeting is Tuesday, March 24th, at 7:00 in the council chambers. Generally, it's the first and third, but we had to tweak it this month due to elections, the first meeting on Tuesday. So it is different than normal. And I think in April, it'll go back to the first and third again. Local organizations are always invited to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at our city council meetings. Just have to contact city staff or city council members to get on the list to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. City council meetings and work sessions are always open to the public. Current and previous meetings are available for viewing and listening at www.CrystalMN.gov. Does anybody else have any other?
Just an add-on to item F, for the next council meeting on Tuesday, March 24th, we also have citizen input time before the work session. It's between 6:00 and 6:30, right, Ann?
Correct.
And that's what I talked about earlier, which is neighbors' opportunity to come and talk with the mayor and available council members on any topic, off record, off microphone, and off camera.
Yep, it's just kind of a casual way to address things. Any other? All right, well, here are no other, oh, Nancy?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second a motion.
Second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.